All to order, could we, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Mr. Craig?
Here.
Mr. Drell?
Here.
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 Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Maureen. The first item on our agenda tonight is a special presentation from the FCC LA National Conference Team. Would you all like to come forward now?
Hello, and thank you for allowing us to share with you tonight the accomplishments of our national qualifiers with Family Career Community Leaders of America, also known as FCC LA, from Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School and Lincoln High School. Hi, I am Laura Cronin.
And I'm Valerie De Vries-Pulman, and we wanted to thank you for the opportunity that they had in to present their story through the National FCC LA theme, Our Story, and to tell you how we participated in the first virtual FCC LA National Leadership Conference and Competition.
Students presented their projects at the Regional FCC LA STAR event, which was held at Spash High School in late February. The top two in each category advanced to state level. Twelve Rams and twelve Lincoln High School members participated in STAR events and all would have advanced on to a state-level competition.
Since our state conference was canceled due to the unprecedented times, the regional scores were used to select the Wisconsin representatives that would advance to the National Leadership Conference. Again, the top two from all of the regions.
From Rams, we had students compete in National Programs in Action, which was an event using a national program, Financial Fitness, to present money lessons to a 4K classroom in the district. Here is a display visual of their presentation, of their documentation, as well as they had submitted a video presentation. And we also had a Focus on Children, Advanced on Nationals, also was a lesson to a 4K classroom in the district on kindness to.
I am pleased to introduce Vanessa Freeberg and Sarah Cordy. They represented Lincoln High School in the STAR event, events called Interior Design and Say Yes to FCS. Students were introduced to FCC LA through their coursework in a class called Interior Design and Teach and Lead. They continued there to explore their career path and put in many hours after the course ended to compete in their FCC LA project. As we found out that the state conference would be canceled, we waited to see who would actually be representing Wisconsin at Nationals. We were excited to learn that these students would represent Wisconsin and Wisconsin Rapids, and then waited to find out if Nationals would be in-person or virtual. For the very first time, our students at both the middle school and the high school were up for the challenge to complete the tasks necessary for the showcase, their projects at the first virtual national leadership conference.
By June 7th, PDF files and documents work along with video presentations were electronically submitted. July 7th through the 9th, we socially distanced a LHS FCS classroom to view the conference, and we had the opportunity to watch demonstrations on career pathways, participate in leadership trainings, and view STAR events award ceremonies. Our results are.
From Rams Middle School, we had Sophia Dula, who was not allowed, who couldn't make it here tonight, and she competed in Focus on Children, and she earned a silver. And I have two Rams students that like to introduce themselves and how they placed.
My name is Maggie Kozlowski, and we competed in National Programs in Action.
My name is Evelyn Bowman, and we won a silver award.
Awesome.
I'm Vanessa Freeberg. I competed in Interior Design. I scored gold.
I'm Sarah Cordy. I participated in Say Yes to FCS Education. I got gold.
We are very proud of these students' resilience to change, persistence, and leadership skills that they have shown. We want to thank their parents for their support, and the district for this opportunity for them to participate in a career and technical student organization. Do you have any questions for any of our participants or from us? So, thank you for letting us come in tonight.
I'm guessing the hope is that you don't have to do it virtually in the future? Congratulations. Job well done. We're very proud of you. Way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is approval of minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve the Special Board of Education meeting minutes of June 29th, the regular Board of Education meeting of July 13th.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve the meeting minutes of the Special Board of Education Meeting Budget Hearing of July 29th and the regular Board of Education meeting on July 13th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. We have one comment from Citizen tonight, and before we start, I would just like to read this notice. Persons who wish to address the board may make a statement pertaining to a specific agenda item, and I will invite you forward at the appropriate time to speak. In the interest of time and to make progress through the agenda, each individual will have three minutes to provide their commentary. Persons wishing to speak should have already signed up with the Board Secretary to do so. Keep in mind that comments made by the public are to be civil in content and tone. Speakers bear the personal risk if comments made are defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Please also note that this is a meeting of the board, open to the public, and not a public hearing. I will now invite the first individual forward to provide public comment. Nicole Fuller-Dorty?
Thank you, members of the board, for hearing our thoughts this evening. I am a Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools nurse here in the district. I was hoping to be heard about our reopening plans. I feel that it is imperative that we do what is safe for not only our students, but our staff, and to be led by the science, the safety of wearing masks, so that we can protect all of our population and keep kids in school. I, for one, was heartbroken when we had to end school early. I missed our kids. We all did. We all want to be back, but we need to do so in the safest way possible. And that's why I feel that making the masks required for staff, students, and any visitors to the building is imperative to that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there no other comments, Maureen? Okay, thank you. We'll move into committee reports, and I guess we can kick this off. I can read from, I think we'll hold off on the reopening plan, and we'll address that last during this. We can get through the other part of the minutes. So, under public comment, we had a comment by Mac Lucas. He's a Lincoln High School student, athlete, and Student Council President. He wanted to voice his support for a safe reopening of school under the two-day-per-week plan as presented, with an end goal to ultimately get students back to school for five days-per-week instruction. He feels that it impacts student achievement, future college plans, food distribution, and provides a safe environment for students, particularly those facing domestic violence, which he stated has increased since the pandemic began while students have been confined at home. He expressed his full support to require mask-wearing in school to prevent viral spread, even if the governor's order to wear masks expires. He believes disciplinary measures similar to those affiliated with the Student Dress Code should be implemented to ensure compliance. Next up was Paula Reeves. She was representing the Wisconsin Rapids Education Association. She spoke about the growing number of COVID-19 cases in our community, which is prompting the WREA to request that the board take action to begin the upcoming 2020-21 school year with students learning off-campus through virtual means. Their leadership has been involved in numerous meetings throughout the summer with administrators, teaching staff, and medical professionals, with an end goal of being able to open schools as safely as possible. However, they are very concerned about schools becoming super-spreaders of the virus in the community once we reconvene in September. If schools reopen in person, they believe there's potential risks to individuals suffering illness or death, negative impacts likely to be experienced by an already fragile local economy if businesses end up being forced to close, and possibly overwhelming the healthcare system. These factors would be far more detrimental to students and families than virtual learning. They understand the need to open schools for educational purposes, the mental well-being of students, and to provide safe spaces and food for children during the day. However, the virus is un, however, until the virus is under control in the community, the WREA believes schools cannot be reopened safely. Once school is open, they strongly support district-wide mask mandate with strong language that states masks are mandatory indoors unless eating or drinking, or alone in a room. Next to speak was David Keach, who's a teacher at Rams. He expressed his strong support for the WREA reopening plan that has been shared. He encouraged us to consider the plan, which uses a tiered approach, and which he believes offers a more concrete and systematic approach than what has been proposed. He would like clarification about whether or not the district's proposed plan mandates masks to be worn during all periods of time, except occasions when students or staff are eating or drinking. He supports a strong mask mandate that is enforced. He had a question about how transportation partners feel about the reopening plan and what protocols will be followed if students show up at bus stops exhibiting symptoms. He questioned where the Health Department stands, the Wood County Health Department stands on the reopening plan, and if they are taking the lead, as has been done in other counties. And he questioned who would be the decision-maker and what criteria would be used when the plan is adjusted, since it states the plan will remain fluid based upon local circumstances and will be adjusted as necessary. So, those were the public comments. We're going to table item A, the opening reopening plan. So, ES2. Roxanne Filts, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, presented a proposed contract to purchase Renaissance Learning Products for the 2020-21 school year, which includes STAR Math, STAR Reading, and Freckle Math. Roxanne described the screening frequency of screenings and how results are utilized to monitor and determine student progress. Results from screenings is particularly helpful in deciding whether or not a student needs intervention or acceleration. Freckle Math helps K-12 students differentiate instruction to reach every student at their own level. This program was piloted last year by classroom teachers who found that the resource paired nicely with the core curriculum materials, and the level of student engagement was high. And ES3 was the Happy Numbers Contract for 2020-21. Roxanne presented a proposed contract to purchase Happy Numbers, which is an adaptive online math program to be used in grades K through 5 across the district. This program includes a thoughtfully designed progression of skills, concepts, connections, and tools that students acquire to ensure a firm foundation for middle school and beyond. The program was utilized last year throughout the district with great success and will be helpful resource during the ongoing pandemic should off-campus learning become necessary. And those were the other two consent agenda items.
I'd make a motion to approve those two.
Second.
We have a motion to second to approve ES2 and ES3. Do we have roll call, please, Maureen?
Yes.
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 Under updates, we had a report from Dr. Danny Scott, our Director of Pupil Services, on the possibility of utilizing the Pitch Elementary School Building as a district early learning center in the future. The Boys and Girls Club have vacated the facility, and the site could potentially be used to house both early childhood and some district 4K classrooms. Advantages for creating an early learning center were shared, along with potential timeline for the center to be up and operational for the 2021-22 school year. Then we had our seclusion and restraint annual report. Dr. Scott provided the required annual report on the number of incidents of seclusion and physical restraint that occurred in the district schools during the 2019-20 school year, up to the point of building closure due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The total number of pupils involved in the incidents, the number of children with disabilities who are involved in the incidents. She shared historical data, training capacity, and future training plans, along with this next year's training schedule. And the last item for update was a one-to-one initiative at Rams. Phil Bickelhoff, our Director of Technology, provided details about the one-to-one initiative being implemented in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. Student and parents will have the opportunity to participate in a Rams Chromebook Care Program similar to the initiative at Lincoln High School. The main difference will be in the fact that students at LHS can keep their Chromebooks upon graduation for a minimal cost. Choosing to enroll in the Chromebook program is optional, but could result in significant savings for the student and parent for costs associated with repaired or replaced devices. At the moment, there's a backlog for districts who are ordering devices as they prepare for the potential move to virtual learning. Fortunately for us, we ordered our new devices early in April, and they should be available for student use at beginning of the year. So, that was the rest of that report. So, we can now go back to agenda item number one, our district reopening plan. Craig, I guess I'll let you start off, otherwise it was like three pages for me to read. People are probably sick of listening to me talk to these folks.
Absolutely. So, as far as a review is concerned, you'll recall that our Ed Services meeting was probably about 90 minutes, possibly talking through the plan. And the plan, as was proposed and presented, that received a recommendation for approval by the Ed Services Committee, would be five-day-per-week in-person instruction for our elementary schools pre-K through 5 in a cohort A-B approach for our secondary buildings of Rams and Lincoln. River Cities would also be five-day-a-week in-person with precautionary measures in place. The A-B cohort approach, for those of you that, a quick refresher, would be A group attends in-person Monday, Tuesday, roughly half the students. B group attends in-person Thursday, Friday, roughly half the students. The other three days of the week, those students are learning at home via virtual and other sort of resources. I know that there's questions in the community among parents regarding what those three days look like, and those details, once again, would be provided by individual buildings on Wednesday, August 12th, after, which was what was communicated last week following our committee meeting. And very clearly, the information that was shared covered stuff like contact tracing, and what does it mean when we have potentially a positive case? And what do we mean by physical distancing? What does that look like? And what about cohorting? What about transportation? So, we covered, for the most part, every aspect of that circumstance and kind of laid out the plans by which we think something like this is even plausible. I'll cite once again, as I indicated in my letter, and just for posterity's sake, the limiting factor of the approach has everything to do with the, with contact tracing and what transpires as a result of a suspected positive. So, the whole point is making our best attempt at keeping cohorts as minimal and small as possible, but still being reasonable enough to recognize that we have to take some efforts upon ourselves as school employees in addition to the behavior of kids, and kids are kids. I'm not going to debate that. But keep in mind, a close contact is considered having been in contact with somebody less than six feet of distance for greater than 15 minutes. So, the sizing piece has everything to do with developing this cohort and mitigating to the, as much, to the greatest degree possible, mitigating the number of contacts a suspected positive may have. So, rather than saying, "I'm a suspected positive," or "I have developed symptoms and I'm awaiting my test results," who are your close contacts? And a student or a staff member would list dozens of people. The hope is that they're going to list four or five, or better yet, two or three. Further, I went on to mention that the plan doesn't provide a 100% guarantee that COVID will not spread and that there won't be people that have to quarantine. But also, as a result of quarantine, or as a result of local circumstances, part of the plan is that we have an opportunity to move any building or the entire district to fully, fully virtual, or any building or the entire district to five-day-per-week instruction in person, and anywhere in between. If I'm thinking about what would happen, you know, realistically, what realistically would likely happen is that there's a suspected positive case in the classroom. The teacher would have to say that they were in close contact with that student. In some lower elementary classrooms, that's probably going to be, you know, in the realm of possibilities. In some secondary classrooms, I think with behavior modification and so forth, it's entirely plausible. Not impossible, but it's entirely plausible that the teacher would say, "Well, no, I really haven't had close contact with that kid." But what would happen then is that staff member would have to quarantine for the, for the required 14 days. Those are required by public health. We don't have control over the public health guidelines or the quarantine expectations, in addition to the student that had the symptoms and then any close contacts of that student. If it was in an elementary classroom, the first thing they're going to do is look at who that student's peer group is, who they're spending their most time with, who sits next to them in their seating chart, because of course, we would have some fairly basic things in place around, this is your spot, you're going to be primarily in your spot during the day when you're in the classroom. But anyway, those folks, that next echelon out of those close contacts would be required to quarantine as well. And then ideally, what transpires is instruction continues for kids that are in quarantine or for the staff member, if they're able to do their job, because remember, quarantine doesn't mean you're sick and in bed and can't function. It means you're required to isolate yourself and stay at home. So, we would continue with the educational program in a virtual means or in some kind of a police fashion where we work with kids and families about ensuring that over that 14-day period, their educational needs are met to the best of our ability. And I think it does also stand reason that that's going to happen, right? I don't think, I know for a fact that when I presented it, it wasn't presented as though no one will have to quarantine. I think that is an eventuality. And depending upon circumstance, it is conceivable that a building might not be able to be staffed. But frankly, steering back to the consultative capacity we've had with our two medical doctors, Dr. Olson and Dr. Falk, as well as with public health, the whole idea is, once again, creating these cohorts and modifying behavior to degrees so that when the question's asked, "Well, who are the close contacts?" It's not the entire school. It's the, it's the classroom, or even a smaller cohort within that classroom, better yet, or a small group of kids and staff are not even technically a close contact. Once again, longer than 15 minutes, less than six feet. So, that's basically the rationale along the, the approach with the elementary being five-day-a-week in-person, based on the fact that the cohorts can be basically the classroom with some modifications inside the classroom, such as assigned seating, doing some things outside as much as possible, you know, a different approach with regard to food service and lunchtime. And then at the high school and middle school level, because of the size of those buildings, cutting that student population in half and ensuring that instead of 25 to 30 kids in a classroom, you have 12 to 15, allowing some physical distancing opportunities. Passing times, remember, would be transient, just like going to Walmart. You're not spending 15 minutes next to people during passing time typically. And you would go and get to your next class. Having teachers rotate versus the students is, is an impossible, it's an impossibility. It's an impossibility because I might teach ninth-grade science, which being all ninth graders, well, first period, but second period, I have some other science that has 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And clearly, if kids stayed in their same rooms or one area and staff rotated around, that would be virtually impossible to accommodate that, based on even having roughly half of the student population in attendance. The approach for the A-B cohort when kids are outside of school is, by and large, that they're, they're doing things that they have been assigned or discussed on Monday, Tuesday, and it's communicated via Canvas or Google Classroom. And there's activities on there, there's videos, there's work that needs to be completed during those three days that they're not in school. And the nice thing about coming back the next week is that now we have an opportunity to review what's been covered, what did you do, what you didn't do, what you not do, and then here's what's going on for the next cycle as we move through it. So, in general, that's what was described. That's a much abbreviated version. You recognize as well that I sent out a fairly comprehensive, I don't remember the final page count, 10-ish page, eight to 10-page communication. Admittedly, it doesn't cover every eventuality. That would be a very lengthy document. In addition, there's some things that I think are going to be completely unknown until we actually start the process and see how things pan out. But once again, I'll point your attention to Wednesday, August 12th, when individual school buildings will communicate specifically with the families that have kids in their schools and provide more details about some of these things that, that there's been questions on. Another thing that I'll quickly mention is just the fact of the timeline. Right now, it's August 10th, and I know school is supposed to start here in about three weeks. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention that having a plan and having it approved by the board in July and communicating to families is almost a guaranteed change, right? Because things are changing in a regular fashion, and frankly, they may change prior to the start of the school year, and they may change a couple of weeks into the school year. And we discuss the idea that the plan is built with some flexibility as a result of local circumstance. Also, part of that communication was a parent feedback opportunity where it was quite simple, and there is, there's a printout here for you at your spot. But we did solicit feedback with regard to the overall plan. As of this afternoon, there was 305 responses. And so, I'm looking at this pie chart and just the bi-gra, bar graph, pardon me. One's being not comfortable at all, and five's being very comfortable. You can see 75 people responded with a one, 42 with a two, 68 with a three, 64 with a four, and 56 with a five. Once again, one, not comfortable, five, very comfortable. And now what we did, if I would direct your attention to this quick synopsis on the yellow sheets, is we took this information with regard to if you put down a five, then what was some of the commentary that you put down? And we had commentary provided by around 200 of the responses, not all 305 people, because there was an open-ended, please provide any comments you feel, you know, necessarily appropriate. And so, working through that to give you some idea or understanding of what might have prompted me to rate it a one, or a five, or a four, or a three, right? We put these in a bucket. So, the first page is on those that, that selected five, meaning that they were very comfortable. There was eight, and these, these are, these buckets are our words. So, we kind of finessed words to put similar responses into that bucket. Eight people said something about the options and the flexibility and the continued communication, recognizing it's a tough decision. Six people, concerns about students receiving quality education virtually, don't want to repeat of the spring virtual instruction. And four people would prefer five-day in-person instruction at all levels. And that's just the top three. Then there's a, there's several more. And again, if you want all of the responses, some of those were, were shared with you via email, but we also have access to that. We can provide you, you know, every, absolutely every comment that we received. Moving on in that same document to those that rated us, rated the reopening plan, pardon me, as a four. 12 people basically indicated appreciate and applaud the work and considerations of the district to keep children safe and provide various instruction options. Then the next number was four. No matter the plan, there'll still be some level of anxiety and concern. And then three people said, "Look forward to getting more specific information from individual schools to make final decisions." Moving on to three. Eight people were in the bucket of all kids should be in school five days per week. Seven indicated they appreciate all that we're doing and have voiced their support. Six people wondered about COVID cases that are confirmed will be handled. Also, six people, concerns about quality of virtual programming. Five appreciate variety of options. Five more need more information about how the A-B cohort instruction will occur. So, that was those that rated three. On two, 10 people indicated something along the lines of kids shouldn't have to wear masks. So, just basically saying, we disagree with the mask piece. 10 said, "We would prefer five-day instruction across the board, so pre-K through 12." And eight said, "With a high number of COVID cases locally, all students should start the school year virtually in return where it is safe to do so." Once again, those are broad buckets that we place commentary that would fall into that sort of category. And then for ones, 19 folks, what would be in the bucket, kids should not be required to wear masks. 10, kids need to be in school five days per week. And nine people, numbers are high in the community, school shouldn't reopen at all, will contribute to community spread. Seven, elementary should be allowed or offered the same options as middle school, high school students, less than five days a week. So, I share that with you simply because, you know, there's a, there's a ton of information there, there's a breadth of responses, but I also think it's relevant to indicate, or at least try to tease out, if I ranked it a one or a five, why did I do that? And try to identify as best we can some of that background. So, I share that with you for your information's sake. Lastly, in front of you with relevance to the reopening plan, which it did include a carve-out or a caveat of masking being required for all students, staff, and visitors to buildings, is some summer school masking data that was collected and put together by Dr. Amy Falk, where she has indicated via bar graphs what the uptake was, the percentage of people wearing masks by week. In summer school, you can see week one, two, three, and four on the left-hand side there. And the, the fourth week is what she, if she were here, would direct your attention. And the fourth week is what she, if she were here, would direct your attention to where you see that the percentage of students wearing face coverings, which would be post the governor's mandate, right, is significantly higher, 90-plus percent is the majority there, whereas other weeks, let's just say it was, you know, kind of across the board, anywhere between 10% and 20% compliance. So I draw your attention to her conclusion. Baseline mask and compliance by students at WRPS Summer School was well below threshold, thought to be protective against COVID-19 without a masking mandate. With a mandate, mask and compliance was in the protective range above 80%. We recommend mandating face coverings to improve this percentage to best mitigate risk. And so what I would say too is in the development of the plan, the expectation or requirement of masks was emphasized by you folks included in that action. And as it stands now, the thought process or the approach that we're using aligns with what the governor's mandate does include. Up until the governor's mandate, I would argue our approach was probably a little less restrictive. But in fact, the governor's order as it's being conceived of now is that, excuse me, if you're in a room, if you're indoors and there's other people around, you have a mask on, unless you're eating or drinking, you can actually remove it if you're speaking to a group or providing educational services, or something along those lines. And then two, masking even if you're outdoors, but you're in groups of people and not able to physically distance. And the thought process too around that would be, and I know there's questions about, what about kids on recess? Should kids wear masks on recess? And frankly, the interpretation on the front end is that yes, that would be a group of people, and that the requirement would be that they have masks on. We are awaiting clarity, school-specific details in the light of the governor's order, but as it stands now, it was interpreted basically as I just mentioned. If you're around other people, indoors or out, you have a mask on, unless, you know, all the time indoors unless you're alone, or if you're eating or drinking. I think I covered everything that I wanted to or needed to cover.
Okay. Anybody have any comments, questions, concerns?
Yep.
No, you can't.
Ma'am, this is not a public meeting, we asked that people signed up at the beginning to speak, so that's, okay.
I guess I would start with a couple of things. One is, the masking issue is, it's non-negotiable. We, if you're going to be successful, we have to do the masking. We are responsible for the health, welfare, and safety of others, and all of our students, and all of our staff, and everybody in our buildings. The only way we can do in-person is to have masks required, and that's not negotiable, you can't do it. So if you object to a mask, your options are virtual. And there is no way we can be successful. I mean, I spent another hour reading emails that came in regarding the subject, and teachers being worried, and people being worried. I'm worried every day. I manage a business, a small business of nine people, I worry every day that somebody would do that. So I've asked my employees to do the right things, don't go the things. I mean, I haven't gone to a graduation party because I have to be responsible in knowing where I'm being so that I can go to my job every day. So it's important that we follow the mask. Quite frankly, our community sucks at this. And if you care, and you care about your kids, and you care about your school, you talk to your friends that aren't wearing the masks, and tell them why they need to wear the masks. It's because of all these little kids, and your grandkids, and your nieces, and your nephews, that you are putting at risk every frickin' day because you won't wear a mask. Because I don't want to be told. It's not political, it's life safety. I have a quote from a doctor that says, you're not going to die from wearing a mask, but you can most certainly die by not wearing a mask. So it's very important. New Zealand has recorded 100 days without a COVID case. You want to know why? They made it a law to wear masks during this time, and if you did not, they had a fine, you know, first, second, third offense, fine. And if you got caught not wearing a mask, you were fined. They enforced it. They said, you need to get a, we need to get a handle on this. Now their fear is that people will get complacent and not continue to do safe things. So it can be done, there's many countries. Spain is now under single-digit reporting every day, and they were a world hotbed, the first country of a hotbed. So it's being done, but you have to do the proper things, we have to listen to the, somebody had said in the comments, yes, we have to listen to the medical community. This has to be a science and medical decision, not a political decision. Unfortunately, our country and our community has made it a political decision. So it is very frustrating to me because I care about the teachers and our students, but we also have on this response, almost 40% are saying we need our kids in school. And I've had things from parents saying, we just got new jobs, we can't not work, and we cannot stay home to take care of our kids. Daycare is almost impossible to find right now. The other one was is that they really can't educate their kids, and they feel their kids are being cheated by not being in school. We also know virtual was a problem for many of our kids, and virtual is a problem for some of our teachers. And there's no accountability part of virtual is very hard to put a finger on to make sure people are doing what they need to do. So this is the most, probably the hardest decision we've had to make as a school board ever. And any, every school board in the state is facing the same thing, but you have the same things. Got to be taking care of the health, safety, and welfare of our people, and we have to be doing the right things by wearing a mask. So if you're in a building to protect everybody, you have to wear a mask. And that is just the only way we can present it. I mean, there's a lot of things that, you know, you can start virtual, but then the problem is, is, okay, when is it safe, and how do we determine if it's safe? I, you know, we have to, you have to draw a line in the sand and start at a position, and then work from that position and see what happens. I'm hopeful that our community wakes up and starts doing the right things for the youth of our community and the elderly of our community. I mean, the other frustrating piece I find that I was appalled is the health department can only report COVID cases in a business or anywhere in the community if that business or entity approves it. So there are many COVID reports that we don't know about because the business didn't report it, and for some reason, they can't tell us about it. So the only way we hear about it is if the business owners do the right thing and say, hey, we have somebody, and you see it every few days, every few weeks, that a bar had this, or a restaurant had this. So it's got to be a team effort by the community, and the community has to step up and do their part to protect our children.
I guess, you know, I look at it, really, we're in the business of education of kids, and everything we do in front of our children is an educational opportunity. I've got a teenage driver at home, I wear a seatbelt. I started wearing a seatbelt when I had a family member killed in a car accident. Up until that point, I didn't think it was that important. I learned a very valuable lesson. I wouldn't let my children drive without one. So even if I didn't feel that I wanted to wear a seatbelt, I would still mandate that my children wear one. So I'm going to ask every parent, every community member to set an example for the kids. Don't send them to school and say, you know, we're trying to fight this, we're trying to get kids in the school to give them an education, to give them lunch, to give them guidance. And right now, the best way to do that is with a mask on your face. It's not a political statement, it's not a reason to start a fight, it's a reason to go to school, get an education. So that's about all I've got to say about it.
Well, I've got something to say too, but I'm going to just take mine down because you won't hear me otherwise. This definitely is one of the hardest decisions I ever had to make, and, because there's definitely two sides. The mask issue for me was not a hard issue at all, because I wouldn't have even considered voting yes to open the schools if masks weren't mandatory. And I struggled with them, I struggled with voting, open them with masks being mandatory. But after listening to the doctors last Monday night, I thought, it sounds as safe as it can be. Well, then throughout the week, you know, there's, things go up and down, and you hear news reports, and I got emails, I got actually 20 emails this weekend, and they were from teachers. But the thing that struck me about the emails was, well, these are the same things that I'm concerned about, that I would be concerned about as a parent or as a staff member. And this morning, I thought, I don't know if I can, I might have to pull it out tonight and say I can't vote to open because that's how I feel. But I called Dr. Olson, she's my doctor, and I knew that I could talk with her about it because I know her personally, and she understood my concerns. But I wrote down a few things that were in the emails that I got from the teachers, because I respect all of your fears and your comments, and I agree with those. So I wanted to talk to Dr. Olson to see if I could feel comfortable opening schools after thinking about what you had written to me and how I personally feel. First of all, I can't make, I can't make my vote just because how I feel. Personally, I would probably have my kids go virtual, because to me, that would, I would be too afraid that they would get something. They probably would have argued, but I don't know. But anyway, I don't have to make that decision. But in the emails, so I talked to Dr. Olson for about 45 minutes, I told her what were in the emails, and I told her what my concerns were. I just want to share a couple of these concerns because it's really important to me. So a lot of it was unfamiliar and needs training with CSOW, they said summer classes were offered, and they didn't, they were closed, they were worried that they weren't going to be able to do it if we had a transition into virtual. Some were concerned about the students' reactions, because classrooms were going to be so different that the interactions, the cooperative learning, the movement, they had no idea what that was going to look like, and they're scared. Teachers are scared, and they're unprepared. They're worried about the virus in their classroom or taking it home to their families. They were worried about expectations for keeping classrooms clean throughout the day. Who's going to do that? How are they going to do that? Kids having their own water bottles from home, cleaning their own, how is that going to happen? Dealing with students who have tantrums, outbursts, meltdowns, while making sure the other classmates are staying safe, masks, self-distancing, et cetera. And some of them wanted to do what Point did, to hold off sending students back to classrooms for several days so that they could train the teachers. And so I talked to Lisa about it, and I said, you know, that the theme that ran through it for me was the fear and the unknown, and how I felt before I listened to them. And so Lisa suggested, and I think she sent Craig an email, that she and Dr. Falk would do Zoom call or Google meets for teachers to answer questions, concerns, they're both parents. They, she said they did it for the daycare and the Head Start, and she said that first there weren't many questions that were asked. In fact, I think there weren't many questions, they kind of went back and forth between each other and told a lot of the things. And she said they got feedback the next week about that they were so thankful to have those kind of, that kind of information. I don't remember which one, but one of them decided to go with masks, and they weren't going to before, so. So I hope that this can be something, I'm not going to change my vote, I am going to support reopening because I do think it's important for kids, but I am, I'm very concerned for staff and kids and families, and I just hope we watch it really close. And she, Lisa said, you know, if you have any fears, call me, and she said, if you think, you know, they're going to look at it, we're not going to, we're going to be as safe as we possibly can. So, but thank you for the emails, I did listen, I think the rest of the board listens to it, it's just, it's hard, because when you make a decision, you have to think of everybody, you can't just make it just how you feel, so.
Go ahead, Larry.
I am one of those persons who's most at risk in this situation. In addition to age, I have a lung condition that would be a big danger if I did catch the COVID virus. I've asked my doctors to tell, to, you know, to give me some advice on this, and they're not going to do it. So I guess it's basically up to me to take care of myself. I followed where the healthcare opportunities are here in Wisconsin, so I know where to go to get the best care. Last week, I talked with Sue from the county health department, and my fears were much heightened. She said, I am so frustrated. We are not getting the testing materials that we need. Aspiris got a letter the other day that said, all those testing materials you wanted, somebody else needs them somewhere else in the country, so you're not getting them. My fellow board member, Katie Medina, last week had a cough, decided she would get tested, had one heck of a time even getting a test. And when she finally got it, here we are, four days later, she doesn't have the results. If you can't get the results, how can you stop the spread of the disease? So I know that this is a tough decision for everyone, but I have to say that until we solve this locally, I can't support an opening.
Thank you, Larry.
I also talked to Sue Cunnaman today from Wood County up at 108, and she, first of all, she said she was very glad that she was asked to be on the committee. She thought that the committee did an excellent job, there was great communications. She is very thankful that we have required masks for everyone. She thinks in-person instruction is a good thing. She supports our plan, and I said, do you have any problem with me sharing our conversation with the people tonight? And she said, not at all. So, you know, Wood County Health thinks we're doing the best we can in the situation right now. We don't know how things are going to change, but you can only do the best with what you know at that time, and I think that's what we're doing right now.
I also think that it's important to note that the governor did mandate the masks, and the conversations that we had last week amongst this group was, if that order is overturned or expires, we will still continue to mandate the mask-wearing, as if the mandate was still in place. Are there any other discussions, comments?
At this time, John, just for the record, the recommendation of myself and the administrative team for the reopening has not changed.
Okay, thank you, Greg.
I'd make a motion to approve the 2021 Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools reopening plan, including the Legacy Foundation grant as presented. The requirement for students and staff to wear face masks during the whole school year, instituting a waiver of Lincoln High School student parking fees for the 2021 school year, and authorization for Superintendent Boren to move between instructional models as necessary.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the 2020-21 Wisconsin Rapids Public School reopening plan, including the Legacy Foundation grant award as presented. The requirement for students and staff to wear face masks during the school year, instituting a waiver of Lincoln High School parking fees for the 2020-21 school year, and authorization for Superintendent Boren to move between instructional models as necessary. We have roll call, please, Marine.
Is it that?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Dibble?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
I'm sorry, what was the motion? Oh, no.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for your input, everyone. And also thank you for all the community members and staff that communicated with us via email. I know they were all read, they were all taken into consideration, and we will do our absolute best this year to keep our schools clean and to keep our staff healthy and our kids healthy.
I mean, I guess the final thought is, is that this is completely uncharted waters, so you have to start somewhere, and so once you start, then you figure it out from that. That's the best we can do with this unsettling situation.
Okay, I would then make a motion that the meeting minutes of the Educational Service Committee of August 3rd, 2020 be approved as printed.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, that the meeting minutes of the head service committee meeting of August 3rd be approved as printed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, those minutes are approved. We can move on to Business Services Committee, John.
Thank you, John. Business Services Committee was called to order at 8:00. Out of our meeting, we had three consent agenda items. Nothing held out, I take it. The first one was a 660301, the inter-district agreement for the virtual program. We've had some more additions to it. Dan did tell us that out of our last approval last month, we had about, I believe, about 10 pull out where they decided to not allow their students to come to our virtual program, which they can do under the 660301, because we are now a full-time charter school, we have to have the agreement of the district for them to come here. So this meeting, we had 26, excuse me, 26 students come in, 22 from Point, three from Adams, and one from Tri-County. The committee recommends that I move that we... The committee recommends that I move that we accept the 660301 cooperative agreements for students attending the virtual program from Adams, Friendship, Stevens, Point, and Tri-County school districts as listed. The second item we had was the community eligibility provision, which allows us to have free and reduced options at two more of our buildings. So that's a very good thing because we do have the need. So this allows the addition of Washington Elementary and Vesper Alternative Schools to the community eligibility provision program. So they can now get free and reduced breakfast and lunches there for the students in need. So the committee recommended, and I move that we accept the addition of Washington Elementary and Vesper Alternative Schools to the CEP program. And then our last item was the upgrade of pavement at Woodside's back parking lot. The parking lot is in some dire need, and after consulting, several people had said that the best option, or they determined the best option, is to repave the whole parking lot, plus they're going to add some parking at the west, I believe the west end, for teacher parking. This parking area is where the buses come in, and we have... The parking lot is the special education vans, bus drop-off parking lot, and pickup for students, and also where staff park. So the deterioration was more than just being patched and fixed, so the determination was to do that. So the committee recommends, and I move that we approve the proposal from American Asphalt to replace the north parking lot at Woodside Elementary School and expand the parking lot to the west for a total cost of $105,340, which will be funded from the 2021 building and grounds budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve BS1, BS2, and BS3. We have roll call, please, Marine.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
And then the balance of our meeting, we had multiple purchase updates. There was the testing for the Lincoln High School site, which was paid through for a grant. There was custodial supplies, of which we had some discussion about with Ed as far as are we being gouged now because of the need for gloves and hand sanitizers? And Ed said the bottom line is yes. But that's the nature of the supply and demand economy that we have, so basically, to even get it is almost impossible, so the prices have gone up a bit on that. The other couple of things, we had some software and instructional supplies as far as some laptops for the virtual program. So with that, I, committee recommends, and I move the approval of the balance of our meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the meeting minutes of the Business Service Committee of August 3, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. Thank you, John. Personnel Services, Sandy.
Okay, Personnel Services met August 3 at 8:05. There was no public comment from that meeting, but from that meeting, we have six consent agenda items, and they are as follows. Number one, the committee recommends and I have to approve the three professional staff appointments. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the four support staff appointments. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one non-represented staff appointment, and this is the person that's taking Rich Larson's place, remember? Rich was everywhere, all the time, taken all the video. Four, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff resignations pending receipt of liquidated damages, and I see from our billing that we have received one of those. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three support staff resignations. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve a 5% educators' rising advisor academic co-curricular position at Lincoln High School, starting with the 2020-21 school year. That is 5% of $38,000 or for a total of $1,900 per year. We had discussion... Does anybody want any of those held out?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve PS1 through PS6. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Then there was some discussion on the summer swim site coordinated position. They were talking about increasing the salary and making it retroactive. We're almost at the end of the summer, so that we have decided that we're going to table this until April 2021, when we're starting the new season. And then we have, finally, the employee handbook revisions, and we've been working on these revisions. I think you had it in your packet. This is something that is literally going to change monthly. If things change in the community or COVID, this is also going to change, but you have a chance to read it. Other updates, Brian Oswald, our Director of Human Resources, updated our committee on the co-curricular positions. The compensation will not be like the curriculum department, but administered by Human Resources. There's nothing different, it's just who's going to cut the checks. So instead of the curriculum department, it's going to be Human Resources. Nothing's really going to change. And finally, we had a request to confidential secretary's retirement benefit, and we decided not to act on this at this time. So with that, I move that the minutes on the August 3 Personnel Services Committee meeting be approved as printed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Service Committee held on August 3, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Next item, agenda referrals, information request. Anybody have anything? Go ahead, Sandy.
Could we have a report on what training we had during the summer on technology when it came to virtual learning, how the CSO went, anything else, and what we have planned for the fall to help our teachers get up to date on some of this? So what we've had this summer and what we have planned for the school year. Thank you.
Are there any other items? Okay, we can move on to the legislative agenda. What you got this month, Troy?
So this month, I'm going to pick up right where I left off in July. There's been a lot happening at the federal level, more so to discuss at the federal level this month than at the state level. I'm going to jump right into July 15 and start from there, which I know is just a couple days since last month's report. July 15, the US Senate began debate on the Fifth Coronavirus Response Bill headed by Majority Leader Mitch McConnell. WASBE has sent letters to both Wisconsin senators, Tammy Baldwin and Ron Johnson, urging for their support for funding in the bill, and urged school board members to reach out to both senators as well. Discussions in Congress regarding the overall shape and size of the relief package have continued since then, with disagreements over the total size of the package emerging. The White House, along with some congressional Republicans, hoped to cap the package at 1 trillion, while congressional Democrats strongly favor more funding in future legislation. In mid-May, Democrats in the House passed a $3 trillion measure that McConnell and Republican-controlled senators have not yet taken up. To date, there has been little public discussion about how much education aid will be included in this bill. As noted last month, Republican Senator Lamar Alexander of Tennessee chairs the Senate Education Committee. He estimated it will take between $50 billion and $75 billion in federal assistance for K-12 schools and colleges and universities to reopen safely. Senate Democrats have proposed an additional roughly $200 billion for K-12 education that I noted in last month's report as well. From the Washington Times, now moving on to July 22, the Washington Times reports the White House and Senate Republicans, at that time, reached an agreement on a key part of a coronavirus stimulus proposal that included $105 billion for schools and billions more for testing. The chairman of the Senate Appropriations Committee, Senator Shelby, announced a fundamental agreement on funding levels at that time. This proposal, at the time, was expected to cost 1 trillion, and Senator McConnell was also pushing for liability protections for businesses that do decide to reopen during the pandemic. Looking stateside now, on July 23, the State Senate Committee on Government Operations, Technology, and Consumer Protection, which is chaired by State Senator Dewey Strobel, who is a former school board member himself, that committee held an informational hearing on virtual instruction and overall virtual schools. The informational hearings are used by legislators to learn more about a given topic, and WASBE was one of the groups asked to identify speakers. In the list here, they do go on to thank multiple school board members for providing testimony at that committee. The full recording of the hearing is available on the Wisconsin I website, and the link is right on the legislative blog. Out of the governor's office, on July 24, Governor Evers announced that 155 local education agencies are eligible to apply for the $46.6 million provided to Wisconsin through the governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund, established under the CARES Act. This announcement comes as last month, the governor announced more than $80 million in financial assistance through K-12 schools and overall higher education. Also, from the US Department of Education, the Office of Communications and Outreach announced that Governor Tony Evers recently directed the Department of Administration to identify 250 million in cost savings at state agencies for the current fiscal year. He had previously ordered a 5% cut to operations in late April. Turning over to the National School Boards Association, they are helping lead a national effort calling attention to the digital divide in education. This pandemic has highlighted a long-documented, persistent issues affecting students that lack adequate broadband access. The National School Board Association is urging WASBE members to demonstrate their support for closing this homework gap and supporting the FCC's E-Rate program. And if you're interested in more information on the National School Boards Association information page, the download for the Day of Action, National Day of Action Toolkit, is available on the website as well with further links. As we know, in the coming days, despite pressure, Congress had made little to no headway on additional coronavirus relief. Looking at progress in Washington DC, the package seems to have stalled, dimming hopes that more federal relief for schools can be enacted before the school year starts in many states under a month now. Moving forward, tomorrow is the date of Wisconsin's August partisan primary, and WASBE government relations staff has identified at least 16 current or former school board members whose names will appear on the August ballot, running for seats in either the legislature or Congress. I mention that not because WASBE endorses or contributes to any candidates, but just their government relations staff takes note of who steps up and who'll be on the ballot tomorrow. Last month, I reported on the different approach that the Legislative Council is taking in terms of their activities. This year, scrapped is the traditional study committee approach that the council has taken. In its place, they will kick off a series of virtual sessions on a selected range of topics. The first of these sessions will be a virtual early literacy series, which takes place over the course of several Wednesdays in August and the first week in September. The first virtual presentation started last week, but will continue over the next five weeks, Wednesday afternoons. And the selected sessions are available on the legislative tab as well. Moving forward, the DPI is surveying school districts about their reopening plans. As school boards around the state finalize decisions about what next month will look like, the DPI is collecting the survey information from districts that have finalized these plans. The request for the information went out to school districts in an email last Monday, and the survey will remain open into early September to ensure DPI is able to capture as many reopening decisions as possible. Results of the survey will continue to be updated on the DPI website, and as of Friday, Friday at noon, the department received responses back from 197 districts in terms of their reopening plans. The last thing I want to mention, I saw in the Wisconsin school news just today, that WASBE is hosting an advocacy online workshop this Wednesday and Thursday night. The topic is advocating effectively with legislators, and in their announcement, they say that this online workshop is designed to help develop relationships with lawmakers and staff to be more effective legislative advocates for our schools. The first session is Wednesday and Thursday night session as well, and the content is the same both evenings. They're just offering two nights.
Thank you, Troy. We can move on to the bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be noted and the bills be paid as printed.
Okay. We have a motion and second that the receipts be noted and bills paid as printed. Will we please have roll call, Marine?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Marine. Next item, unfinished old business, an update and discussion on future levy override and bond issue referendum questions.
Yeah, so I don't have anything significantly new for you, but two questions to consider. Number one, would you be agreeable to seeing an estimate on a community survey to solicit feedback from the community? On two, the potential for two questions.
I would say yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so I plan on having something prepared for you at our September meetings, then? Timeline for that would be likely October would be when that survey would go out. Then the other thing would be to wonder, and this is not something we need to necessarily answer tonight, but whether or not cultivating community leaders and involvement in a referendum campaign might be a wise decision. So that's something to think about and begin making those kind of connections if you think of people that might be good to be involved in having conversations about it, educating the community, being involved in information sessions and so forth and so on. So just those two things for the time being. Aside from that, not a ton has changed. Dan and I, is Dan here? Yeah. We have a call, well, it's not scheduled quite yet, but we have another ratings call with Moody's that will occur relatively soon and make some determinations on potentially the impact of the virtual closure, whether or not that has an impact on our bond rating as well as an organization. So, not surprising. So that's in the mix as well, and I'm sure you'll get an update once we hear what the disposition of that circumstance is. But we're shooting for something Wednesday this week, but we didn't get a response back yet.
Thank you.
Can I ask how you're going to do a survey? Because sometimes it'll be surveys, you know, on a thousand people, we get 290 responses and something like that's not going to be valid. I think we have to get a really good handle.
Yeah, so what you're going to see is School Perceptions is a school survey company. They do school districts and other municipalities, and they survey the community, and they will employ methods such as phone calls and all kinds of things. Their outreach plan is much more than just what the district communication can penetrate, and the threshold that they will achieve is a certain percentage of responses based on our population. And Bill Foster, the owner and president of that company, will likely present to you in some capacity, either in person, virtually, or in written format, what their protocols are. That outlines the methods that they use and, you know, what statistically is considered representative of the population, and that they focus on diverse groups. So clearly, we can ask parents questions, but we want to know from the community at large because, of course, that's the voting public. And they'll do, they'll provide you demographics on this percentage of those 60-plus, this percentage of those over 30, you know, that kind of thing. So they have a very scientific and very focused plan around what that survey entails and how they go about doing that survey, which is part of the rationale behind contracting with a company that make that happen.
Okay. We move into new business. First item, possible action on employee appointments, resignation, retirement requests. Brian, anything new?
No.
Okay, well, that was easy. Oh, okay. Next item, discussion and possible action on a recommended addendum for employee handbooks.
Yeah, this is alluded to by Ms. Head earlier in the night. You saw this last week. We made some changes going into PSC last week. One additional change from last, we mentioned that this is going to be constantly changing. So with the school board, again, officially going through tonight with the face covering on page four, you see there was a change that's updated in yours, a change from should to must be worn unless staff member is alone, eating, drinking, or outside away from other people. So as things evolve, this addendum will evolve. The staff have seen this with the bold, highlighted, underlined, still waiting board approval for the past month, so they've seen this document and have been asking questions. so they've seen this document and have been asking questions. There's an FAQ attachment to it that they were able to follow along, at least so that they're kind of up to date and familiar with it. So when this comes through officially, they've had time to at least digest it and not have a couple of weeks before the school year starts to have to figure it out.
Have you had many questions regarding this handbook?
Not much. The majority have dealt with travel, so, and that's usually not real soon, but you know, some of so-and-so's got a son, daughter, et cetera, getting married in February. Am I allowed to go on these kind of things? Face coverings was a big one at first, but as that, it's kind of gone through the, it's reduced. But the majority of the stuff they've at least heard about and being teachers are constantly reading what's going on around, so they're pretty well-versed in, you know, COVID protocols.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Now, the last item on here is the,
You would need an action on that.
Oh, yep, sorry. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I would make the motion to approve the addendum to the employee handbook concerning pandemic workplace protocols.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the recommendation of the addendum to the employee handbook covering concerning pandemic workplace protocols. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the last item was discussion and possible action on reopening plan. We've already addressed that. I, I think some other questions have come up around, um, virtual teaching, around, you know, training for teachers on the software and, and programs they'll be using. I think the question was asked under agenda referrals about that, so that's about the only other thing that I had brought forward.
Yeah, and I do, we'll give you a comprehensive report, but I do know that we, Roxy and, and curriculum has done some things with CSO, um, and we have things in the works, of course. I think one of the, one of the biggest issues with regard to professional development has to do with the fact that it's June, July and August, and there's other things that are clearly going on, uh, and, and accessibility. But that doesn't mean that, uh, you know, we don't give it a shot and the, the, did we run two classes, Ross?
We have, and the thing with CSO is until we can get classes set up, teachers can't get into it until they have a classroom to get into. So we needed to wait until the secretaries came back to the buildings to assign students to classes, and Phil has it all ready to go as soon as we have those kids assigned. Um, Amber Appleby, one of our instructional coaches, has set up a Canvas class, so teachers will be able to take the class and learn the program. We have offered at least two classes for teachers to learn it over the summer. Yes, those classes filled up, and to fill up, it was like a sixty-person limit in the class, so they did fill up fast. And we also do have several elementary schools that have used CSO exclusively, so it's not like our whole elementary population needs to learn it. Um, some buildings, I think there's maybe only one building, maybe two, that haven't used it at all. So there are some people in each building that are familiar with the CSO program. Um, remember, CSO is a program that the elementary teachers will use to communicate with parents and with students when they are working virtually. So that's their communication, and it's going to be uniform across the district so that parents, if they happen to have kids in several different schools, it's the same platform so that it takes away that confusion. That was our goal. So that training is coming, it's just we couldn't do it until we were able to purchase CSO and get everything set up. So that is going to happen.
Okay, well, thanks for that update, cause we, we all received some questions about it and I didn't really know how to answer, so I guess that's good to know.
I don't, I just would emphasize, take the opportunity to emphasize too, that clearly with regard to the reopening plan, I mean, uh, we spent a lot of time talking about kids, but I, I think it, it goes without saying, but I'm gonna say it right now anyway, we also have concerns about our staff members. And what I think about, uh, is my own personal circumstance, as, uh, not in my current position, but as a classroom teacher. Immediately upon thinking about what the reopening plan looks like, I think about, okay, if I was a teacher, what would it look like in my classroom? And for the record, I was seventh grade science, right? So at the secondary level, it's a different ball to wax, and it is at the elementary level. If we didn't have the consultative, uh, capacity of our local medical doctors as well as public health, I'm honestly telling you, I have no clue what I would propose to you nor, uh, a plan that I could feel that we could live with. But I do think that, and, and it, it, it it almost kills me to make this statement, but we have to modify our behavior as adults in classrooms as well. And that is completely contrary to any message you would ever hear me say with regard to how we're supposed to engage and, and really, you know, do the art of teaching. Uh, because the last thing you think about is how close am I to this kid, right? And I think at our elementary buildings, particularly kindergarten, first grade, that becomes quite difficult. And the plan then is to think about, okay, how do I make sure my cohort is as small as possible if I have close contacts? Cause I will with these kids. As we move up the echelon, I, 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 I'm not saying it's easy. It's going to be very different. It's going to be not easy at all. It's gonna be tough. But I think it's plausible. I think it's doable. So that the goal is to really think about, was I in close contact with that kid? I don't know if I've been with the kid for fifteen minutes closer than six feet. But we all know what we anticipate seeing in a classroom and what that environment should look like, but what does it look like during a pandemic? Right? Those are not easy things to talk about. It's, uh, it's, uh, sad that we even have to have that, this conversation. I would also just quickly throw out too, that CSO is not just for when we're virtual.
No.
Because staff members can be using CSO and should, should be, most likely, as their communication, uh, vehicle with families to send home their newsletter or just a quick note or, you know, this, that or the other thing. And frankly, it's twenty-twenty, uh, and we, you know, moving down that path with a little kick in the rear end because of a pandemic i- isn't really a bad deal. But getting people on the uptake, anytime you adopt something new and you're looking at training every elementary teacher, for example, or at least a good portion of them, uh, you know, there, it, it's not gonna be perfect and not everybody's gonna be at the same position at the same time, but with the overarching goal of, you know, getting there. Also, it's not a crisis, right? So if I don't know how to use CSO to start the school year, I'll be okay. Um, and, and we don't want folks to struggle. We wanna provide the, the, the necessary PD, but, um, it, it's not at a crisis level. So I just wanted to, to toss it out there. But nonetheless, you will get what was requested with regard to summer offerings as well as, excuse me, leading up to school and what we have planned for, uh, during the school year.
Can you tell me what, how long the training is for the CSO? I mean, how, how much, how intense is it for, I mean, how much time will it take a staff member to do that?
I think it's going to depend on how much they want to get to know the program right away from the very beginning. The basics, you could learn CSO, the basics of it in probably an hour. But if you were going to go in and, and do the more in-depth parts of CSO, I would think the training,
Probably four to five?
Four to five hours if you were, I mean, you could basically use it by watching one video that teaches you how to use the very basics. But we want our teachers to be able to get to know
Be comfortable.
how to use it and use it. We used to have CSO free, which was like the very basic program, but what we've done is we've bought the premium for all the teachers. So now we want them to learn how to get into the program and use it as best as they can. And like Craig did say, it's for all elementary teachers to use all the time now. So it's the same communication whether the kids are in the building or not in the building.
Great, thank you.
Larry?
If we return to virtual, which is certainly possible this year, how are we doing with the students that have, uh, don't have internet connection and reliable stuff?
Well, I guess I'll answer that one, Larry. Uh, we have, we're gonna work with Solaris, they have a state connected program, which offers internet access into their house for reduced costs, very intimidating cost, it's like fifteen dollars a month, and then we'll be, we'll, we'll probably pick that tab up for them, and we have fifty hotspots available as well for people that need that.
What you saw in the district, thank you, Phil, what you saw in the district communication too, is that you'll contact your building. If you have issues with internet connectivity or the need a device, contact your building, and that will be in individual building communications as well. And as Phil mentioned, working with, uh, Solaris and, and Justin Hugner, who, they've really stepped up the plate, so hopefully we can get this done, and, and we'll foot the bill. So folks don't have internet access, they don't have a device, getting a device is fairly easy because we have access to those. But getting them internet service is now a possibility and not, uh, at a significant cost. And clearly, it would be based on circumstance and need, so this wouldn't be ongoing into the future, but it would be, uh, you know, in the short term, as it were. Hopefully, it's a really short term?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll see.
Anybody have anything else? I guess with that, uh, we're adjourned. We have no more meetings this month, so take care and stay safe, everyone.